Good afternoon and welcome to the special virtual school board meeting of St. Paul. It's Wednesday, August 5th. Lisa, would you take the role?
Inspector Bjorkland. Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Lolliverdy?
Here.
Inspector Arant?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Inspector Diaz?
Here.
Chair McLellan?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We're here tonight to talk about the 2020-2021 school year planning. We'll open up with Dr. Webb.
Thank you. So we have a PowerPoint in your board packet for tonight. And the first agenda item is just about school year planning. And so we're going to highlight a handful of slides about the governor's recommendation to prepare three learning models. So Lisa, if you want to display that. Are you able to do that now? All right. Thank you. So we're calling it the flexible learning model because we have to stay flexible in a pandemic. And as the state mentioned, we could be at any one of the three models throughout the course of this school year. Let's go to the next slide and I'll give you the overview of those and remind you of those three models again. So in-person is all students back. Hybrid is typically about 50% of our students back every other day. And distance learning is learning from home. So in the in-person scenario, we know that a requirement currently is to socially distance. So we're all struggling to foresee the scenario right now where we get all students back and not socially distanced. So we don't want to violate governor's direction about things like face masks, sand, socially distanced, and washing your hands. So I'm not going to spend much time there tonight and we're going to keep going to the other two scenarios. In the hybrid scenario, again, I mentioned typically a 50% maximum capacity. In hybrid learning, we do have social distancing. So typically about half the students in the classroom. And it has capacity limits in rooms and in our schools. We've got students learning part-time, in-person, part-time, online, at home. In the in-person and hybrid scenarios, we have a number of prevention practices and safety protocols. With our prevention practices, we have things like social distancing, face coverings, the daily health screenings. With the safety protocols, we have our deep cleaning. We want to make sure that we have everything from signage to ventilation inspections to classroom arrangements, things like that, that keep our safety, our whole system safe for students and staff. Next. We have a couple of individual slides about our hybrid schedule. And Chad and the principals have done a lot of nice work with their design teams on creating these models. I'm going to tag out for a minute and let Chad Schmidt get on and cue up his microphone to just walk you through the next couple of slides.
Good evening, Dr. Webb and board members. So this slide is the secondary, middle school, high school, and CLC hybrid schedule. And what you'll see here is a visual that's meant to depict that households will be assigned to either group one or group two. And for the students from the households that are assigned to group one, they would be in school on Mondays and Thursdays. And they would be doing distance learning on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Students in households assigned to group two would be doing distance learning on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And they would be in school on Tuesdays and Fridays. And that applies to both secondary and elementary, just to help you see that as a K-12 perspective. For secondary students, their primary modality for learning content will be through the distance learning model. And what they would do while they're in person is get additional relationship and social connection. So attending to social emotional learning needs. But they would also then have academic support, interventions, differentiation, extensions on their face-to-face time. And so what you would see is a student household that's assigned to group one, student would have their learning online. They would come to school on Monday, meet, and their daily schedule would be their typical in-person daily schedule. So six class periods. They would get to meet with each of those six teachers. And again, during that time, it would be some academic support. It would be some interventions and extensions and differentiation in addition to community building and social emotional relationship development. So that's true for middle school, high school, and CLC. Lisa, if you'd go to the next slide, elementary. So again, the picture looks the same, but the type of learning activities that students would do will look different. So at the elementary school, the face-to-face learning is where they're going to get their content learning in addition to their relationship building and social emotional needs met. In distance learning, they're going to be practicing the concepts and skills and understandings that they have been taught while they're face-to-face. So at elementary, the distance learning is for practicing the things that they've been taught during face-to-face time and space. So that's the, again, the visual is the same, group one, group two, days that they're in person and days that they're doing distance learning. The difference between secondary and elementary is the delivery of the content and the learning.
Thanks, Chad. So we're going to have plenty of time for questions as we wrap this PowerPoint. But I'm going to shift into our third model now, which is the distance learning scenario. So in this scenario, students will learn at home through digital learning and they'll receive their daily interaction with their licensed teachers virtually. Next. In the distance learning model, we've been working to build, you know, throughout the past three months through staff surveys, through our elementary listening sessions and really connecting with our design teams and building leaders and teachers to try to address the inadequacies of our model last spring. Next. So as you know, we received initial guidance from the state, about 100 pages of it, on June 15th. We then also surveyed our families. The majority of our families back in June said we want our students back in school. We have more communication going out tonight to say, where are you now? We also have a pandemic advisory committee that was formed and has been integral to making sure that for all the staff that are continuing to be on-site during the summer to keep our district running and as we plan for the start of the year, that we do so safely. And then we have 14 design teams. And I just want to take a minute to thank our 14 design teams for building all the different components of our district plan. Next. So we have a number of priorities that we use to develop the models. Safety is always top of the list. High-quality instruction is key. Flexibility and maintaining flexibility. Or in a pandemic, the data continues to change, we have to remain flexible. Next. We know that we always have to use data-driven decisions and focus on educational equity to make sure that we are including and focusing on instruction and social emotional support for all of our kids. And then we want accurate and timely communication. Those are some of our key priorities as we launched our model discussions. Next. So you know that on July 30th, seems like forever ago, just a week ago, Governor Walz announced that we not only had to prepare for these three scenarios, but we needed to announce what was kind of our base plan, our initial plan for the start of the school year. And we got a new set of data that came, a 14-day rolling average for case counties, our county case numbers per Dakota County's 14-day average. We can go to the next slide. They shared the formula and gave us the calculation. So basically every day, 14 days ago drops off, a new day data adds in. And at the end of every Thursday afternoon at 4 o'clock, we get a new data set. So tomorrow afternoon, we'll get a new data set. So we're busy trying to calculate that data ourselves as Dakota County superintendents. And I'll just say, over the last week, and actually the last several weeks, the data has increased. Next. As I shared with board members earlier, and I'll share again, last week, we were using data that ended approximately July 17th. We're trying to, again, self-calculate, official data will come tomorrow. We're trying to calculate our own data and our own calculations. We're at that level three, we're at a 21 on this 20 to 29 level. So we went from 16 just a couple of weeks ago to now 20 to 29, which is we're officially, or I should say unofficially, our own calculation at about a 21. And tomorrow we'll get our official numbers. But we've moved down a level into a more restrictive setting. And the governor says, this is not the deciding beta. This is a starting point for school board conversation. So right now, we're in that zone, level three hybrid learning for all students. Next. There are plenty of other factors that go into the decision. So the 14-day case count is one. We have to allow families the ability to opt into distance learning. When we did our survey in June, it was about 22% of our families that said, we want that choice. I wouldn't be surprised if that number goes up to 30 or 40% as we get closer to the start of the school year. But we don't know until we give families the choice and to state their preference about distance learning or hybrid learning. And we can't, we have on our agenda the ability to decide tonight. I would like to tell you, you don't have to decide tonight. You have the ability to move this decision forward to a time when you are most comfortable. Staffing needs. So we did a staffing survey about 10 days ago. We've gotten the results in. We're now working individually, person by person, with staff that have underlying conditions or staff that have family members with underlying conditions. And so we're going, it's one by one, individual. Our HR office is extremely busy, as you can imagine, just managing through any staff concern. And then financial impacts, there's always potential financial impacts. We continue to manage through that. We just had 100,000 masks delivered for PPE. We will get more from the state as well. We got some from Dakota County. And we'll have to continue to manage that as we start the year. Next. So we have a number of next steps. Like I said, we are going to share the flexible learning model for each of the three scenarios with staff and families. We are going to survey our families to let them declare their learning preference. We have to analyze that family survey data and all of our staffing needs and then determine our best learning model to start the school year. And in doing all of that, we still have to finalize our operations in staffing, food service, transportation, and school age care. Next. So I tried to keep that as brief as possible, give you the overview. You received plenty of handouts from my assistant Lisa today with the family communication with that, I think it's called safe, strong, prepared handout. Yesterday, our staff got the COVID preparedness plan for all of the employees. So there's no shortage of reading material. And we just have to continue to communicate the best we can with all of our staff. So if I could, just before I tag back to you, Jeff, just a little bit of just experience in making decisions on calling a snow day over the past decade. Oftentimes, you don't want to go alone in calling a snow day. And you typically don't want to go first. And, but I'm going to give you the lay of the land of what I know so far of school districts that have already declared a model. So in Minneapolis and in St. Louis Park, they have declared distance learning to start the year. And they said they would look in October to see if they could possibly go hybrid. St. Louis Park, I believe, was just last night. St. Paul's school board met last Saturday. Superintendent announced, but they actually met last Saturday and still didn't formally approve it. They have a meeting tonight, just as we do. But they are leaning distance learning in St. Paul heavily. West St. Paul's board met earlier this week and they were split on the decision. And they'll be coming back later. Tonight, Inver Grove Heights will be announcing hybrid. And 196 Rosenmont Apple Valley, last week, announced hybrid, as did Farmington. So those are just a few districts from around that I thought would be helpful. As we do in calling a snow day, it's really helpful to see what our neighbors are doing and those kind of in close proximity to us especially. So Jeff, I'm going to kick it back to you and open it up for questions from the board.
Thanks, Dave. First of all, is there any questions on the PowerPoint that was presented? We'll start there. Okay, I guess we'll just open it up for discussion. Anybody have it?
I have a question. Do I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In regards to Minneapolis and St. Louis Park choosing distance learning, I thought I understood that the reason they chose distance learning was to be better prepared for the school year. I'm not sure that they were making that decision based on infection rate. Is that true? Or what do you know about that, Dave, or anybody?
Yeah, so if you look at their infection rate, you know, there was some rub right away in the newspapers when the governor's model said something different than their announcement. So again, governor's model and the data is a stepping off point for school boards. It's not the decider for school boards. School boards have local control. You get to decide and make the call. And our leadership team right now is recommending hybrid. That's a recommendation, and school boards get to decide.
Did that answer your question, Patty?
Um, not really. The process that they came to that decision is a little cloudy to me. But you know, I heard that they wanted to be well-prepared and they didn't feel they were prepared to start hybrid. So they went with distance learning. That's what I understood.
In Minneapolis, they announced even before the governor.
Yeah.
And they tabled it till after the governor. And then they announced the same thing that they had announced prior to the governor's announcement. So, and then St. Louis Park just announced last night.
Patty, do you mean well-prepared in like spacing and environment and PPE? Is that what you mean, well-prepared?
That's how I understood it, that they didn't feel prepared to start the school year with hybrid for all of the decisions that need to be made. That's how I understood it. I may have misunderstood. And I'm not sure that what this adds to the conversation. But I am concerned that the process, our decision process is clear, that when we make that decision, that it is clear why we made the decision.
When our leadership team makes decisions, you know, the four key questions is, do we have all the information? And do we have everyone's reaction? And have we looked at all the options so we can make the best decision? So I'd use the I-Rod model that ago and just try to say, first question is, you as board members, do you have the information that you need? Nikki's shaking her head, no.
No, I don't.
What other information do you need, Nikki?
Um, I just have so many questions. And the teachers have so many questions. And just jumping into the thick of things here, and I know other board members have also heard from staff. And I've been getting phone calls, texts, emails, all the way up till 4:15 today. And it feels like the words that are being said are not matching what is really happening. Teachers feel unheard. They feel they have been left out of the planning process. There have been a few people included. But overall, there hasn't been enough communication about, you know, what's what. They don't feel like their voices are being heard. They get cut off in the Bilt meetings. They just have so many questions about their own health and what happens if they become positive with COVID and how does that work for sick leave? You know, and it was my understanding that teachers could choose to either do distance learning or hybrid learning. And yet today, I heard that that's not true, that all teachers are expected to teach in person. Now, I'm just throwing that out there because I don't know the answer to that, but.
I could start with that question if you want, Nikki.
All right.
So the staff survey that went out is to allow all staff to notify us if they have an underlying or if they have a family member with an underlying condition. So those are the two qualifying events that say, yes, I need to have an accommodation or I need to work this through with HR.
Well, it felt like the answer from HR didn't match what you had said earlier. In that, is that part true about they either have to choose? Or everybody has to be available to teach in the hybrid model? Is that part true?
Everybody needs, can you just be a little bit clearer on what?
Yeah, so even if they have let you know that they have a medical condition or a family member or, you know, any of that, are they still expected to be able to come into the buildings?
Yeah, if you have an underlying condition, every one of those kind of goes one by one. So if you have a doctor's note, you have an underlying condition, HR is working a special plan for you. Kathy, I don't know if you want to elaborate there?
Yeah, Kathy, is it too early for you to jump in?
So I can try to address this. So I wonder if Nikki, you might be referencing during the governor's press conference, there was some conversation. And I think one of the assistant commissioners actually said that teachers or staff would be able to choose whether or not they work in the building or in person, that they would have some options there and that we would have to accommodate that. That statement was incomplete and not accurate. So there was correction of that statement the next day by the governor's office to say, if we, if staff have underlying issues, to the extent possible, districts are to try to accommodate those, whatever the restrictions are. So that statement came out after the fact, unfortunately. So that places us kind of in an awkward position that that was in the press conference, but in fact, that is not true. Let me just clarify that just a tad bit more. If every staff member, if we have our students in person in school or in the hybrid model, we have students in school. If every one of our staff members said, I want to work from home, we wouldn't be able to teach our kids. So there would be no one in the building. So that is an unrealistic notion that all staff would be able to have that option to work from home. So they backpedaled on that after the fact and kind of took care of that. And then going back to the underlying issues. So I am in the process of talking with staff who have indicated that they have a health issue or someone in their household has a health issue. And I am talking about, with them about what the options are. And in a hybrid model, if we have students in the, in school, which we will, we will need staff in school. And we may not be able to accommodate staff members to work from home if we have students in school. So we have to take this, each situation, each person individually and kind of walk through, what does that look like? And what would be the options if we are not able to accommodate having somebody work from home when we have students in school? So it's a pretty intensive process and, you know, trying to answer questions as best I can in this uncertain time that we are in here and as things are continuing to change.
Well, that is different from what?
Oh, sorry, I was just, Linda, I don't know if folks can see that on the line. But that process, Kathy, is from ADA federal law, right? It's not like us making a decision based on, you know, subjective criteria. We really have the criteria that's set out federally, right?
That is correct. There's a number of things. There's family medical leave. There is the Families First Corona Virus Response Act that comes into play. There's ADA, there's individual bargaining group contracts and the leave associated with that. So we are following all of the federal and state guidance, the executive order, all of those things. We are following that. This isn't, this isn't me making this up. I am following all of the guidance that we have in place.
Yeah, I hear that. I hear that. It just is a little concerning to me that if people, if somebody has a medical issue, but yet it doesn't fit the criteria or that they're going to be expected to teach. I mean, I think you're going to be asking teachers asking for leaves of absence. We may have teachers who leave. You know, and you've got to think, I'm thinking about the budget alone. If you have teachers that start applying for leaves of absence because they don't want to start in the classroom, how's that going to affect our bottom line?
Yeah, staffing is one of our significant challenges without a doubt in school districts in the country right now.
Yeah, it is, it is. And so I guess what I want to go back to is if things are tied up in this pretty package and, you know, you let us know about all the design teams. uh, you, you let us know about all the design teams and the people that have been, uh, you know, working on things over the summer. Why are there so many staff members who are so unhappy and scared? And reaching out to board members for help? Can you help me understand that?
Yeah, I would, I would say at, at every site, um, you, you know, we have over, we have 550 employees. So, uh, when you're working on a design team on a daily schedule or on a food service uh, design or transportation design, uh, these, this is a group of uh, people or a hundred. So, uh, as we tried to kind of continue to roll forward with a, with our smaller design teams, we continue to try to share out with larger groups. And at each building, that was the goal.
Hmm. But that doesn't really answer my question. Why is there so much angst and feeling, but that they haven't been communicated with? That they've been waiting and waiting and nobody's telling them anything. Now, you know, there's stuff starting to come out this week. Um, but what, why, why are we hearing from so many staff? What, what's missing here?
I think part of it too, Nikki, is that, that I had heard today that folks, you know, were waiting on communication. Absolutely. I think it, you know, uh, next pandemic, I think we'll be better at all of this stuff for sure. Um.
That doesn't help.
Were there, were there lack of, of, uh, communication or, you know, taking pauses when folks wanted to hear more? Absolutely. But what I heard too today wasn't that they weren't hearing it. It was that they were worried about the choice. What was the choice?
That's not what I've heard. I, I've heard comments about that, the choice. Definitely I have. Um, but many of the people I've talked with or gotten emails from are talking about not getting, not having good communication and even just, you know, a short email or a, you know, something, this is what we're working on this week. You know, this is what blah, blah, blah. You know, that that piece was really missing. And I've heard that from a number of people.
So I, I would say that, um, this is the most complex change that I've ever seen in my whole career.
Yes.
And to change 14 key systems all at the same time, I will just say this. Uh, my, William, uh, we haven't had vacation for most of the summer here. So we've been at all summer long throughout the whole, the July, when usually we'd be able to take some vacation time. Uh, as we're trying to, uh, really make sure that we not only keep finding, following the changing guidance from the governor, but we are trying to actually, uh, listen to staff, support staff and try to make the best possible learning model. And I'll never be one to say this is perfect. Um, but we are trying to get to the best possible plan. And there is a sweet spot between staff and the community. Uh, what parents want and what staff want. And so we have to not just, uh, we have to listen to all and we have to serve all and do the best for the most.
And Nick, Nikki.
Yeah, yes.
I, I feel this angst too. I don't have enough. The governor came out with this last Thursday. That's less than a week ago. It's, I mean,
Right.
I still don't have all the information that I need to make a, a informed decision on the going forward. And I can't imagine how everybody's feeling that way.
Yes.
I mean, everybody's feeling that way and we have to get the best information we can. And maybe, uh, the administration is not communicating enough. We can push them to communicate better.
I, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
I think it would.
Could I jump in for a second? I've been waiting for 10 minutes here. Um, you know.
Well, you might have to wait a little longer.
Well, if you want to talk, Nikki, go ahead.
No, I'm giving you a hard time.
Okay. Well, what I wanted to, uh, kind of reiterate here is the fact that we're in uncharted waters. In 130 years, in this school district, we have never reopened a school. So I'd like to thank the administration, the faculty, the school board, everybody for doing the job they've done. But if there was ever a time that we need to step up and be a team, this is it. And, and a team is bigger than the sum of its parts and it takes some sacrifice on everybody's part. So I'd like to thank everybody and, uh, remind everybody that we are a team. And then the other point I had, uh, Dave, maybe you can answer this, but for Kathy, if we have reviews with teachers and they're ruled against, do they have a, a process, uh, to, um, to be reevaluated or, or to, uh, um, what am I trying to say?
Appeal, appeal process.
Yes. Do we have one in place?
Kathy, you want to speak to that?
Bill, are you, are you talking about the, uh, come for health issues? Is that what you're talking about?
Right. Do we have appeal process in place? And if we do, Kathy, is there's somebody to represent the person that's appealing?
There is a, a very defined process to go through and, uh, I, I don't want to go into great detail here. There is a, a process in place. They do have a voice in, in the whole process. Um, appeal process, I think is perhaps maybe a, a strong word in it. Uh, but they're part of the whole, um, conversation about accommodations.
And I'd like to speak to Bill's first point about team. And I think that's where a lot of the feelings are coming from with staff is that they don't feel part of the team. They feel talked at, they feel talked down to, and they don't feel part of the team. And that is causing some really bad feelings, some hard feelings.
So, so Nikki, maybe as the board, could we can encourage administration to better communicate?
Well, yeah, what does that mean though?
I, I don't know. I, I don't know.
I don't want to just make these blank, these blanket statements without specifics. And what does that mean? Let's, let's have a concrete plan.
Will you, okay, you, you tell me what would you like?
Well, you know what? I don't want to be put on the spot like this. Um, I, I, I'm speaking, I'm advocating for staff. I'm not advocating for me and what I need. I'm talking about staff and.
Do you have any suggestions what you'd like the administration to do to communicate better with the staff?
Well, I think a, a weekly email, um, with a, you know, just an update of this is what, this is what we're in process of doing. Um, you know, just that and that. And I talked with Dave about this, that, um, you know, you can have all your data and all your research and all your pie charts and graphs, but education is about people and it's about heart. And I said to Dave, people, they want to hear, they need a message of comfort. They need to hear, we're going to be okay. That we are strong people and we will work together to solve this. And it is a very complicated situation. Absolutely it is. Um, but I think that human peace once again is missing. People, you know, people are scared.
And myself included, so.
Well, you're not alone, you know?
And, and, yeah, okay. Um, okay. Uh, anybody else have any?
Yes, Jeff, if I can just, uh, get in here real quick. I do have to leave this meeting in 15 minutes at 5:30. I do have, I have council, I have to be down at city council chambers for training for the election next, next week because I am an election judge. I guess, uh, from my opinion right now, as of right now, this minute, I am not ready to make a decision as to which way we're going to go. I think Dave, you had mentioned that you're going to get more information from the county tomorrow regarding like the percentage of COVID cases and that, you know, should help with our, our decision too. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm supportive.
Family survey.
The hybrid, you know, if it, if it works for us, but I'd also like to make sure, should we start with hybrid? That we would have a, have an immediate plan, should we have to as a district and a state to go to virtual, you know, online strictly immediately due to a, a quick blast of COVID? You know, if it resurges, you know, seriously in the fall. So I, I would think Monday, Monday's board meeting would give us, you know, the weekend to, you know, rethink this and answer any more questions. So my suggestion is maybe on, on Monday, if we could take a vote at that time. Cause I'd like to see us give us, give our family or whatever scenario we do end up with so that they can arrange, you know, their childcare or their own jobs or whatever, all the things that are involved with this. So like I said, I will be leaving the meeting in 15 minutes. So thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy. Um, can I take, since you have to leave, somebody else has to leave too, I believe.
Linda does.
Can I take a quick, okay, can I take a quick straw poll thing, kind of a thing? Is anybody, I don't know how to put this. Um, I'm in favor of moving this until Monday, at least Monday. Is anybody against that? Cause we're going to make a series of motions later. For the resolution to, I mean, is everybody okay if we wait on this for a couple of days?
I'm not ready to vote.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Wendy, you don't want to. Chris?
No.
No, I'm not ready either.
I'm supporting.
I definitely think, go ahead now.
I'm supporting Wendy on this. I, I feel we're not ready and, uh, we don't want to be first.
Okay, that's.
And knowing that we may have to change in a day or less. So, uh, we're, like I said before, we're in uncharted waters and, uh, I'm willing to wait as long as the administration has the time to make, uh, you know, good thoughtful thoughtful, uh, consideration. And, and as long as we're, um, doing the most, you know, doing the best for the most people involved in the situ, in the decision we're going to make. Thank you.
Bill, Linda, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, um, yeah, I, I feel, I, I definitely think we need some more data, some more discussion. Um, moving forward, I hear Nikki's point about how did we get here? And what can we do differently? Probably not just with pandemic, right? I think this is communication in general, all the way around about a lot of things.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So I hear that absolutely. And, and that I think is a plan for another day. And maybe it's having a teacher focus group. You know, once, once we start having a teacher focus group to say, whoo, we're on our way, but what the heck happened and how, how could we have done better? Like even something like that as an idea. Anyways, um, but I do feel this sense of urgency for families, you know, um, they, they, like Wendy said, they've got their lives to plan. Who's going to take care of their kids? If, if for three days they're not in, in school, um, how do I, you know, what if their, their childcare was grandparents before? Now where do they go? Um, what if something changes like we suspect it's going to change every couple of weeks? You know, how do we help parents, um, kind of navigate through all of this? Ah, do we make a decision for the rest of the school year? Do we, I know that, um, Egan made their decision and said folks can choose until, you know, they've, in January, then, then we'll try something else. Um, so just a lot of thoughts, but I'm okay waiting till Monday.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Linda.
But I think, I think Monday for me is my limit. Like we have to decide.
More data by then. Um, if it's.
And Jeff, could I just mention that, that we're, we're deciding is the base learning model? As we know, pandemic change. So, uh, we're making a recommendation on the base learning model for the resolution from the state.
Right. Um, as long as Wendy has to leave, Linda, you have to leave too.
I just have to leave somewhere by six, so I'm good.
Um, do we want to move on that postponing the resolution right now while everybody's here? Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, Chris, you go. I'll let you know when to do it. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the South St. Paul School Board to approve, approve the MSBA resolution. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion, Chris? This is. Linda, can you make that motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we suspend this, um.
Yes, I would like to, uh, make.
You go, Chris.
Chris, go ahead.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, right now we are.
Okay, I'll talk quick. I make a motion to postpone indefinitely voting on this resolution.
Okay, there's, is, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
And any discussion on the motion? Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
And Chair McClellan?
Yes.
Seven years?
Okay, the resolution is, it postponed indefinitely. Thanks, guys. Now we can get back to our discussion.
I had a question about, um, when Chad was talking about the secondary, um, hybrid. And I mean, it sounds like there's not going to be any direct teaching on hybrid days. That those are going to be like time they can work on things or to, you know, get tutoring or they have, they can hang out with each other and, you know, be social. I mean, that to me sounds like kind of high-paid babysitting. I mean, if the kids are there, why aren't we teaching? I'm confused on this.
So thank you, Nikki, for, um, sharing your, uh, confusion. And, uh, I'm going to start, but I'm also going to ask Leah, uh, Borg and Chuck Ochaki to be ready to chime in. They've been the ones who are working, uh, closely on their plan. Um, it is, um, so, so, uh, the direct instruction is largely going to come through the, through the distance learning. The, the work with students face to face, um, won't be just, I, I want to make sure it's not just hanging out, but that, um, teachers are, um, working to connect with students to build those relationships. So that's some of the social emotional learning connection to it. Um, and then they're also, um, helping, uh, students navigate through the content that they've, that they've asked them to learn through the distance learning. So, uh, Leah and Chuck, can you add some additional insights or perspectives from your close work at middle school and high school?
Yeah. So actually, uh, in June, when the governor rolled out that we had to come up with three plans, working with the teachers, uh, starting on June 10th, right, it just seemed crazy to say to the teachers, you need to have a distance learning plan and a hybrid plan, right? So you have a whole group of kids who are working at home while you're meeting with kids in the classroom, right? That managing that seemed, uh, crazy. So we just said, we're going to go with the distance learning as our mode of operation for this year. So if we're bringing kids into the building in hybrid, it's because we are, we, what are we going to do in the classes? We're going to cover major concepts. So reteaching some of the major concepts that the kids have been asked to look at. We're going to do our interventions and we're going to do remediation. So it's really more like a targeted. If we have 50% of our kids in the building, that means our classes are at 15 kids. It's more targeted to the kids for the help that they need. So it's really our tier two and tier three support systems for each of our kids.
So parents who opt then to do full distance learning, their children won't receive that kind of extra help or, you know?
So they'll actually receive that on Wednesdays?
On Wednesdays?
We have the distance, yep. So if you go back and look at the diagram on Wednesdays, it's called the listen, the distance learning days.
Mm-hmm.
That's where our teachers are reaching out to the kids who they haven't seen throughout the week. That's where our teachers are reaching out to the kids who they haven't seen throughout the week.
Okay. Okay.
And I'm just going to add a little bit, um, this is actually more of a flipped model which lends itself better to differentiation. So students are going to be more likely to get things that they need. Um, this is, this is kind of where the trend of differentiation is going anyway. Where students would get lessons and videos and things that they would do on their own. And then the teacher would interact with them one on one about their direct questions.
Thank you. So so Nikki, does that help answer your question and and my apologies for any confusion that my earlier statements might have caused?
Have to apologize. Um, I I just was, I just, it didn't quite click what. What the purpose of of that was, so.
Does it make sense, does it make more sense though now Nikki?
Yeah, I guess I need to think about it some more.
Sure.
But thanks for the answer.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Chad.
Has anybody talked about in your, with all the teams and the planning and everything about the whole issue of masks?
What?
Are you going to get, how do you get little kids to keep a mask on? And you know what, you send your kid to school in the morning with a Batman mask and they come home with a Spider-Man mask? I mean, little kids are not going to grasp this. And I think it's unfair to expect them. To get social distancing and to get the importance of where, and what if you have parents who don't believe in masks? So they don't send their kids to school with a mask. What then?
We, MSBA is working on a policy, a masking policy that we're going to have in place. So we have something to fall back on. Um, if a parent, I mean, I don't know, I don't have an answer to that.
Does anybody?
I'll start and anyone else on my team can jump in. So the whole reason we're here is to help teach and learn. And so there will be students that get it right away. Um, and there'll be others that struggle with masks and. I I've been wearing a mask especially for the last couple of weeks now. Uh, but I I've been wearing one into uh, Menards or Home Depot for. And I'll just say, I'm still getting used to it as an adult. So we're going to have to keep uh, supporting, practicing, teaching. You know, we, we're hearing things now, they have some of those like buffs and things that kids can just work around their neck and pull up. That aren't even the regular behind your ears face masks. So I think we're going to, we're in this early evolution part where I think better ideas will keep coming forward. Especially for our youngest learners. So and uh, it's a political hot button across.
Yes. Nikki, this is Terry. So just uh, uh, to inform the group too, we have a. Small group of teachers who's uh, leading an effort to address the social and emotional needs of kids for the first three to six weeks. So kind of like their first unit of inquiry into what it means to be in a distance learning. Environment, what it means to be in hybrid. And that covers everything with how to use technology at home, when you're home. Masks will be part of that, how you walk down the hall, how we're going to use bathrooms. We need to be pretty planned out and thoughtful about how we teach those things um, every single day. Cause the learning curve for adults is steep, for kids, it's going to be even steeper.
Absolutely.
We do have a group of teachers who's putting their heads into what does that look like? In each elementary building and I can't tell you how we're going to handle the kid that doesn't put their mask on right away. Or comes back with the wrong mask. You know, how many times did our kids come home with a different boot?
Yeah, different hat.
Yeah, it's going to happen. We want to take the the angle of educating the parents and the kids and. We're getting to the if it goes really wrong, what are we going to do? But right now it's about educating and with little kids, it's educating in a fun way, hopefully, okay? We've got some ideas about how they can send in videos of them wearing their mask in August and how. I heard a recent one to train your kids, um, every time they want to use a device in August. Make them put their mask on right now. See if they want to use that device. So little things like that, that perhaps help uh, with the habit building.
Yes, because it really, you're right, Terry. I mean, it really is a teaching process. You know, and it and it will have to be reinforced consistently. And not like the teachers don't have anything else to do, but um.
Bye Wendy.
Wendy.
It's a, like, yeah, there's just so many unanswered questions and I know you all know that I. You know, thi- this is, this is unusual time, unusual times for us.
And it is.
I would say unprecedented.
Very much so.
Yeah, and and just to let the group know too, uh, uh, I know we're all just trying to inform staff best we can about what we know at this time. And you just made the point, there's so many unanswered questions right now. It feels as if it's something that we're holding back perhaps and. I'm flat out honest, when I don't know something, I don't know something. And um, so we'll continue to work on getting the best information to our teachers a- as we can.
Okay.
Part of what I've said Nikki to staff too, is part of my job over the summer is setting the table for them. Um, so they can come to the table and maybe rearrange the table. Or maybe, you know, and and help at that point, but um, that's what we've been doing in July is doing our best to set it up.
Yeah.
To get feedback, to make changes, um, to improve whatever.
Yeah.
Whatever part of the plan that we need to, so.
I think teachers are feeling the pinch that, you know, the first day of school is four weeks away. And you know, when can they get in their classrooms and pack or you know, move furniture or, you know, those are all questions too.
I get it. We get it.
And by nature, teachers are planners, right? Most teachers are planning all summer long for September. And so I I think you're right, it it is a pinch that they can't plan. What our reaction is going to be for any of these questions and and the frustration for me is when I hear an I don't know. So I can't even imagine these teachers and I'm like, what? What do you mean you don't know? So I think um, I think I don't know is really difficult. But absolutely understandable. How can we, we've never done this ever. So how can we have answers to it? And and maybe sometimes that's all it takes is that, you know, honest. We we got nothing for you, sorry, got nothing. And we wish we did, um, and we can plan, we can plan 47 models. But come September 7th, that may not be what we go with. Right.
Alright.
And this is, sorry, can can I jump, but this is.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So I just, I appreciate that last point too. I think um, part of the difficulty right now is people are given like a choose your own adventure. Level of information and they want, you know, like what's the September 8th plan in a situation where like it would be irresponsible for us to assume the September 8th plan? And as part of the conversation with teachers, like we've had weekly listening sessions or staff meetings. Ours was about 70 minutes this morning at Lincoln Center. And we've talked about like going back to the mask piece too, that like part of that in-school experience. How we schedule in the time allotment we have for things is going to be very different. Like like the flow of the school day is going to have to account for changes in how much academic time we really have. Versus how much time is spent uh, following social distancing, staggering schedules. That there is going to be an hour or two here or there a day that that like is just going to be very, very different. And and that that's expected. And so the other message we've been sharing is like, it is going to be hard and we're not going to win today. With any of this, but when it's done and when we do get back to 100% of kids in the building, we're going to be able to look back and be proud of the effort that we put in. But it's not a situation where many schools or many kids or many families are going to feel like on September 8th that it's a victory. But it is going to be hard.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else have any questions or comments on the process or or anything at all?
There's so much.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, I just, in listening to this conversation, every, everything that's been brought up is just really important to talk about, but. I'm I'm concerned about the tone that we're taking with each other and um, I think what's fueling all of this anxiety is fear. And if we can keep that in mind, that that might be creating more problems for us than we realize. So I wanted to go back to Dr. Webb's comment of how hard the administration has been working this summer and we all know that. And I think that we can, we can receive each other um, with patience and kindness. And you know, always temper our comments with with care and concern. Because we need each other. We need each other to make this happen. So I hope.
Discussion is just as, just as important.
Yes, exactly, exactly. We need to talk about it, but um, let's just be careful. Let's, let's, let's take good care of ourselves and take, we're taking care of the students and the staff and each other. But that fear thing, you know, I'm sure that's what's fueling a lot of this.
They're very afraid.
Yes, yes, and they they have good right to be.
They do.
Yep, but adaptability is the key. I mean, to be comfortable in not knowing is. Is the key, I guess, and trusting that as a team, we'll do this together as as Bill commented. You know, how we are in this together, we need to turn toward each other and and um, hang on to each other.
But we also can't deny the feelings that people, I mean, those things need to be talked about too.
Of course, absolutely, you know.
Absolutely. So are we talking about teamwork here, Patty?
I'm hoping so.
I'm hoping so too, and I'm hoping that everybody gets on board.
Yeah, and I think there's a level of trust too where, that we have to trust that people are going to make. The right decision when we get new information. We, you know. Numbers, right, when we get different numbers and and it may change every two weeks, unfortunately.
Well, and it's a best decision, not necessarily the right decision, but the best decision we can make.
For that time.
Yep, at the time.
Yes.
And that's a hard, that's a gray area and nobody likes to be in gray areas, but.
No.
That's where we're at.
Especially our planners, right? Our teachers, our planners. It is, it is a hard place to be. Our families who need to know their life so that they can make a good decision for their kid. So it is, it is very difficult. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, so that's. It's just an important conversation and we need to talk about it all.
Thank you, Patty. I think Dave uses the word grace. I think this is.
That is a really good word in my life right now, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, there are so many data points that are, need to be considered in in coming up with the decision. What we just talked about are people's feelings um, need to, is, that's a huge part of it. I mean, that's, that's where you're, we're going to get the support for the decision is is how people are feeling about it and. Um, so that that has to be a consideration in making the the decision. Um, the actual data points, I just have a couple of clarifying questions. The infection rate that will be released each Thursday, that's at the county level, am I correct there? So every Dakota County, rural district is going to have the exact same infection rate?
Yes, and you can actually look more specifically um, within Dakota County. But they give you a county fourteen day rolling rate.
Okay, that'll be, make it more interesting to see what other districts do, knowing that they have the the same rate. And then the new family survey that's out, will that be available by Monday's meeting?
So we, this will be uh, sent to families this evening. So our team has worked hard to get that going. Uh, I'll just say our, her leadership team has battled for the last month to get. 12 pages of all the safety guidelines and uh, prep and learning modules and schedules and everything in that plan. Again, that's the safe, strong, prepared document that you saw earlier today as board members. So uh, that uh, will be included, so the families will get a really nice overview and they'll get a chance to state their choice.
Okay, so it's probably not something we will see by Monday's meeting.
The survey closes on the 12th officially, I think that's Wednesday. Um, and we can do our best to give you what we know as of Monday night.
Okay, alright, that's all I needed.
I'd like to reiterate one thing. I'd like to reiterate that. Some of the comments that I brought to the table here are, all came from staff. None of these are my words. And I also feel that as a board member, um, I represent our community and I represent our staff. And I think we have to be listening. It it's very easy to get caught up in the um, data. And the, you know, all the research and, you know, and I know we're looking, you know, we're always looking to get new data and new information. What I'm asking is that we continue to look at this also with our hearts. And that um, there are times when things could get emotional. And I think that that emotion comes from passion. Um, I I think all of these comments from teachers, emails, texts, phone calls. Comes from a staff that is passionate about what it does and what it believes in. If they didn't care, we wouldn't be hearing from them. So I am passing on their comments. And also sharing my own passion. So I just wanted to be clear about that. Thank you.
And I I appreciate that Nikki and also just, you know, when you get staff member like questions specifically that you can't answer. Uh, we always ask just to redirect to a building, if there's a building specific question. Have you talked to Mike or Terry or Chuck or uh, have you talked to Dave um, to get your question answered? Cause as a board member, I might not be able to answer X, Y, or Z. Char, do you, if you have, especially if you have an underlying condition. Have you talked to, so just, just a reminder about referring back.
Okay. Okay.
And then just uh, I I got a tech communication team that the survey, the parent survey may go out tonight. We're going to again, take into account all the feedback from the board meeting tonight, might also go tomorrow as well, tomorrow morning, so either way.
Thanks, David. Thank you, Nikki. I think I'm, I'm going to say that on Monday, I think I'm ready. To get the information that I have to make a decision on either a recommendation from the administration or or my own recommendation. Um, I think we need to do that as soon as possible. I mean. Like you said, it's four weeks till school, the sooner we do that, better. And I hope, you know, that's just my thought. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Yes, Jeff, I have a thought on that. Um, as we make a decision, I would hope that we would uh, um. Put forth a united front and make a unanimous decision, whatever that decision will be. It will take some sacrifice on some parts and no sacrifice on others, but if we could show some unity as a board. I think uh, people may have a little more confidence in us than they do at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Patty, go ahead.
Um, is that uh, what we vote on, will it be conditional? On on future data or data?
What we're going to do is we're going to do a base learning plan and then we're going to give Dave the authority to move that up or down as needed.
Okay.
So it could be the Minnesota Department of Health that says you have to close based on infections and. So typically they take over as school infections start.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay.
And I agree with you, Jeff. We can always wait for more information, but I think we, you know, four weeks away, we have to to. Let me make that decision on Monday. It's time.
Linda?
Agree.
Okay, Nikki?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Anybody have anything else to add before we close out? Dave, you want any final words?
So just uh, if I could just remind everyone, and this sounds kind of silly that I'm saying this. We're in a pandemic, people aren't doing well. The mental health challenge that everyone on this screen faces, our community faces, our kids face, our staff. The mental health challenge that everyone on this screen faces, our community faces, our kids face, our staff. Uh, it's a real deal right now. People are challenged, facing challenges that we've never seen before in many different aspects of their life. Mental health specialist, I know you see it firsthand, but I just wanted to remind everybody that to, to continue to be the eyes and ears as board members of our community is important. Continue to be listening. So refer back to administration when you don't know and can't answer or really would think it'd be helpful, additional feedback for our team. And just, uh, I want all the, uh, the people that played a role in helping get our communication up and out, whether it's our staff survey, our family survey, all of our district communication. There's just been a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of behind the scenes work. So just a hat off to all of those staff and leaders that have participated in this plan to what it is today. Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
I saw one, something today too, that struck me. It was just a little short quote. It said, relationships before rigor, grace before grades, patience before programs, love before lessons.
Nikki, if you'd send that to us, I'd appreciate it.
I'd be happy to. That just struck me today.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. That's it. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second. Lisa, will you take the role?
Inspector Diaz?
Yes.
Inspector Bjorkland?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Lalaberty?
C.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Chair McClellan?
Yes.
And Inspector Felton left at 5:30, so that's six yeas.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Take care.
Take care.
Thank everybody.